Bonne samedi, la législature est de retour depuis la récession. Nous sommes actuellement sur le projet 254-36 COR, substitué sur le plan d'ordre, un acte pour ajouter un nouveau chapitre à la division 2 du titre 17 du code Guam, relatif au définition de la nécessité éducatrice et professionnelle pour les conseillers scolaires qualifiés et pour autoriser le compilateur des lois à faire des changements. Nous sommes toujours en discussion, et le sénateur Titekui, vous avez le plan.
Je suis Massei, madame la reine, pour avoir la possibilité de... avoir la chance que le corps puisse lire la discussion du roundtable qui a été amendée seulement hier, vers la fin du jour, au rapport du comité. Mais je souhaite aussi rapporter au corps un témoignage qui a été soumis et demandé qu'il soit ajouté au dossier. Donc je fais une motion... bien, laissez-moi lire le témoignage et puis je fais la motion d'ajout au rapport du comité. Il est daté du 12 décembre 2022, du département de l'éducation, du superintendent adjoint Francis E. Santos, à l'honorable Talina C. Nelson, et il est adressé à elle également concernant le projet 254-36. Il dit : "Hoffaday, présidente Nelson et membres du comité. Le département de l'éducation Guam a examiné le projet 254-36 et ne supporte pas la proposition de la législation. Le département est actuellement en train de négocier le contrat de bourse collective, CBA, avec la fédération de enseignants de Guam et les conseillers scolaires. Les préoccupations sont traitées. En plus, les questions discutées dans la session du roundtable précédente et des auditions publiques sont gérées par mon équipe de management et moi, y compris les chefs de travail des conseillers scolaires sélectionnés. Le département de l'éducation Guam continue à travailler avec les parties prenantes scolaires publiques pour assurer que nos advocates collectifs supprime les barrières qui empêchent le succès académique de nos étudiants. Le projet 254-36 crée plus d'obstacles pour les étudiants qui ont besoin d'interventions immédiates, donc je ne supporte pas sa passage." 签了 Francis Santos. Merci madame. Et je voudrais faire une motion pour inclure ça dans le rapport du comité.
Il y a eu une motion pour ajouter un témoignage supplémentaire au rapport du comité du projet 254-36. Y a-t-il des objections? N'ayant pas d'objections, la motion est prête. Sénateur Tello, vous avez le plan.
Voilà tout ce que j'ai. Merci madame la reine.
Le sénateur Tello, je demande que vous soumettez ce témoignage aux avocats. Senator Nelson, vous êtes reconnu.
Merci madame la reine. Je fais une motion alors de mettre le projet 254-36 à l'abri, dans le cadre de ce nouveau courrier que nous avons reçu. Nous voudrions mettre ça à l'abri.
Merci. Il y a eu une motion pour mettre le projet 254-36 COR, substitué sur le plan d'ordre, y a-t-il des objections? N'ayant pas d'objections, la motion est prête. Nous sommes encore au second dossier de lecture sur le projet 361-36 COR. Sénateur Perez, vous êtes reconnu.
Bonjour madame la reine. Je vais mettre le projet 361-36 COR sur le plan d'ordre. Je vais accepter la version substituée du projet 361-36 COR. Le titre est : "Un acte pour ajouter un nouveau article 8 au chapitre 1 du titre 22 du code Guam, règles et régulations relatives à adopter un nouveau contrôle de revue source pour nouveaux et modifiés sources majeures dans les zones non atteintes de sulfureux d'oxyde transmis par l'agence de protection environnementale de Guam." Je crois que c'était téléchargé sur le drive.
C'est correct. Il a été téléchargé et les sénateurs reçoivent maintenant une copie.
OK, bien.
Merci. Pour votre information, collègues, le logiciel du projet peut aussi être trouvé sur votre drive.
Donc, pour réiterer, je vais accepter la version substituée du projet 361-36 COR, sponsorisé par moi-même. C'est un acte pour ajouter un nouveau article 8 au chapitre 1, titre 22, règles et régulations de Guam, relatives à adopter un nouveau contrôle de revue source pour nouveaux et modifiés sources majeures dans les zones non atteintes de sulfureux d'oxyde transmis par l'agence de protection environnementale de Guam.
Il y a eu une motion pour accepter la version substituée du projet 361-36 COR. Y a-t-il des objections? N'ayant pas d'objections, la motion est prête. Sénateur Perez.
Merci madame la reine. Je vais mettre le projet 361-36 COR, substitué sur le plan d'ordre, dans le troisième dossier de lecture, et je souhaite discuter.
Veuillez poursuivre.
Le projet 361-36 a pour but d'adopter les règles et les régulations qui ont été promulguées par l'agence de protection environnementale de Guam afin de répondre aux exigences de la partie D de l'Acte de Clean Air pour s'aligner avec les règlements de l'agence de protection de Guam avec l'Agence de protection environnementale américaine pour la revue de nouvelles sources majeures et modifications de sources majeures dans les zones qui ne sont pas en compliance avec les standards de qualité de air ambiant national (NACS pour courte phrase). Donc, les standards de qualité de l'air ambiant national établissent un critère pour les polluants de l'air comme le sulfureux d'oxyde, le carbone monoxide, l'oxyde de nitrogen, l' ozone, le lead et la particule. Les zones qui ne répondent pas à ces standards sont désignées comme zones non atteintes. Au Guam, il y a deux zones telles qui ne répondent pas aux standards du sulfureux d'oxyde. La première est centrée dans les centrales de puissance Cabris au PDI, Guam, et la seconde est centrée à la centrale de puissance Tegisen, qui n'est plus en opération. Donc, l'EPA de Guam doit atteindre les normes de qualité de l'air ambiant nationale en 5 ans, et dans le cas de Guam, l'atteinte doit être réalisée en 2023. À cet end, l'EPA de Guam a complété l'inventaire des émissions de base pour 2020, et en 2020, l'inventaire des émissions de sulfureux d'oxyde pour Guam était de 9 197 tonnes. L'inventaire des émissions estimé pour le sulfureux d'oxyde en 2023 est d'une mire 3 tonnes, une réduction de 9 193 tonnes par an de sulfureux d'oxyde. Donc, une fois que l'Autorité de Puissance Guam a commissionné la nouvelle centrale de puissance cycle et a décommissionné Cabris 1 et 2, Guam sera en pleine atteinte pour les standards de qualité de l'air ambiant de 2010. De plus, l'adoption de ces nouveaux règles de revue source proposées avec la soumission d'un plan d'implémentation statéque actuel est obligatoire pour éviter les sanctions. Certaines des sanctions pour ne pas soumettre un plan d'atteinte pour les standards de qualité de l'air ambiant de 2010 de sulfureux d'oxyde comprend la perte de fonds de voie fédérale de environ 17 millions pour FY 2022 et environ 18 millions pour FY 2023 et 2024, en plus de require un offset de 2 à 1. Le projet 361 substitué a été créé en collaboration close avec l'EPA américaine pour faire les corrections nécessaires au numérosing pour assurer l'exactitude des références cross. Il met aussi la section du projet intitulée "Sulfureux d'oxydes provenant de la combustion de carburant" qui appartient à une autre partie de la loi, et dû aux différences dans l'applicabilité. L'EPA américaine recommandait que ça serait inclus dans le plan d'implémentation statéque dans le draft prochain plan d'implémentation statéque. Avec l'adoption de contrôle de revue source sous le projet 361, les usines qui cherchent des permets majeurs de source ou modification majeure seront respectées selon les standards les plus strictes, qui incluent la plus faible telle émission de l'air, ou la lauréat, dans laquelle le coût n'est pas une considération, ainsi que l'application d'un thèse de thèse de moins de 100 tonnes par an versus le 250 tonnes actuelles par an de pollution de l'air. Dans le projet 361, les frais actuels sont de status quo, qui sont 3 750 pour le frais d'application et 1 000 pour le nouveau frais de non atteinte de zone. Avant la passe du projet 361-36, les règles et les règles seraient administratives satisfaites par la suite : en compliance avec les règlements de l'Agence de protection environnementale américaine, partie D, des normes de non atteinte pour les standards de l'air ambiant de 2010, adhérentes aux frais de status quo, et 3, cela aiderait à éviter les sanctions pour ne pas soumettre un plan d'atteinte pour les standards de l'air ambiant de 2010 de sulfureux d'oxyde. Je veux remercier l'administrateur Guamé-Pa Walter Leon Guerrero, l'administrateur Michelle Lastimosa, l'avocat Kristen Finney, l'administrateur programmaire Air and Lands Roland Gutierrez, ainsi que Laura Yanian de l'Agence de protection environnementale américaine et tous les employés impliqués qui ont aidé à progresser les règles et les règles par le processus administratif. Et travailler vers l'établissement d'une primacité pour l'EPA de Guam pour la revue des règles de revue source majeures concernant des sources majeures et modifications majeures que, après l'adoption, seraient mis dans les exigences les plus strictes dans la protection de notre environnement et de la santé de notre peuple. Je suis Massei.
Merci sénateur Perez. Sur le projet, le projet 361-36 COR, substitué sur le plan d'ordre. Sénateur Titekui, vous êtes reconnu.
Merci madame la reine. Et vous savez, j'encouragerai l'auteur de cette législation. C'est beaucoup de travail entalé dans la création de ces articles et travailler avec l'EPA en le faisant et adresser certaines des questions, soumises par l'EPA. Cependant, je souhaite... la version substituée que nous avons reçue maintenant, je voulais juste demander à l'auteur ce qui a été substantiellement changé encore sur ce... désolée si elle l'a déjà dit, mais si elle pouvait répondre à la question sur ce qui a été substantiellement changé dans cette législation.
Sénateur Perez, vous y répondez à la question.
Oui, je serais heureux de répondre à la question. Donc, dans les règles et les règles originaires qui ont été soumises, le numérosing était hors de temps et il a commencé à 1800 jusqu'à le chapitre 18... désolée. Donc, le numéro initial a commencé à 1800 et il est descendu à 1811, je crois. Laissez-moi juste l'afficher. Donc, si vous regardez la version de logiciel, les couleurs sont là. Et donc, laissez-moi juste aller dans le bas. Oui, donc dans les documents originaux qui ont été soumis à la législature, le numérosing a commencé à 1800 et puis il est descendu à 1811. Et donc, en regardant le document de source qui a été fourni par l'EPA, ce sont les documents de source sur lesquels les règles et les règles étaient basées. Le numérosing a commencé à 1801, il a terminé à 1811. Et donc, ce que cela a fait, c'est que ça a changé les références cross. Si vous regardez le contenu des règles et les règlements, donc ce qui devait... donc en gros, si vous regardiez, disons, une section... il y avait quelques sections où les références cross étaient à la numérosing originale. Et donc, il n'y avait pas de sens... oui, en gros, ça a invalidé ce que la règle était destinée à faire. Et donc, avec ce changement de numérosing, c'était très critique pour reinstaurer l'effet de ce que ces règles étaient destinées à faire. Et je serais heureux de parler à... à tout ceux qui ait des questions sur exactement quelle section cela affectait. Et donc, ce qui est arrivé était aussi que ce qui a été ajouté était une section qui ne appartient pas à cette partie des règles de revue source majeures, et c'était la portion de sulfureux d'oxyde, qui appartient à une autre partie de la loi de Guam. Et donc, elle n'était pas liée à cette règle de revue source particulière, mais pouvait être défendue dans un autre projet.
OK.
Ou un autre règles et régulations, promulgation.
Merci.
Senator Titekui, vous êtes reconnu.
Merci madame la reine, et pour la possibilité et pour cette réponse du sponsor de cette législation. Vous savez, parfois quand vous avez des projets substitués, ils ont été substantiellement changés, mais c'est en gros une question de numérosing qui a été mise en place. Pendant l'audition publique, il y avait une discussion extensive sur certaines zones, et je ne crois pas que GPA ait des problèmes avec ça. Je veux dire, nous savons tous que c'était eux qui ont violé l'Acte de Clean Air, mais ils ont nettoyé leur Acte. Donc, j'apprécie cette législation et je remercie l'auteur pour son travail dur en établissant ça. C'est longtemps overdue. Merci madame présidente, ah, madame la reine.
Merci, sénateur Titekui. Sur le projet 361-36, substitué sur le plan d'ordre. Sénateur Perez, vous pouvez fermer.
Je veux juste remercier mes collègues pour leur soutien en avance, et je veux surtout remercier l'EPA de Guam pour leur travail dur et l'EPA américaine pour leur collaboration dans la getting ces règles et les règles faites de façon très rapide, et je regarde l'importance de la passe de ce projet. Je suis Massei.
Merci, sénateur Perez.
Merci. Et je vais mettre le projet 361-36, substitué sur le plan d'ordre, dans le troisième dossier de lecture.
Sur la motion pour mettre le projet 361-36 COR, substitué sur le plan d'ordre, dans le troisième dossier de lecture, voteur, y a-t-il des objections? N'ayant pas d'objections, la motion passe. Sénateur Perez, vous êtes reconnu maintenant sur le projet 360-36 COR.
Merci madame la reine. Je vais mettre le projet 360-36 COR amendé par le comité sur l'environnement, revenu et taxation, recrutement de l'emploi, statistiques de recherche et planification, sponsorisé par moi-même. C'est un acte pour ajouter de nouvelles sections 5111188, A9 et A10 à l'article 1, chapitre 51, division 2, titre 10, code Guam, relatif à protéger notre air, notre eau et notre sol et la santé de notre peuple de l'exposition toxique due à la brûlure ou déclencheur ou déclencheur de déchets dangereux et la prohibition de l'importation de déchets dangereux dans Guam, dans le troisième dossier de lecture, et je souhaite discuter.
Veuillez poursuivre.
Donc, le projet 360 a pour but de protéger la santé de notre peuple et l'environnement de l'exposition toxique due à la brûlure ou déclencheur de déchets dangereux et à la prohibition de l'importation de déchets dangereux dans Guam. Le projet 360 fait des changements concernant le projet de conservation et de récupération de ressources, comme l'EPA est en train de faire de nouveaux changements dans réponse au rapport de l'Académie nationale de sciences, d'ingénierie et de médecine de 2019, identifiant des alternatives plus sûres pour le dépôt de déchets énergétiques. L'EPA américaine se réfère à la brûlure et déclencheur ou déclenché comme "technologie sale" avec pratiquement aucun contrôle d'émission résultant dans la libération de produits chimiques dangereux et substances carcérogéniques élevées. Cela comprend le lead qui a été banal au Guam dans les années 1990 et le strontium et l'uranium. Le dioxine, qui est cancer causant même dans les plus petites quantités et est un polluant persistant organique, a été connu pour être libéré par les émissions et a été détecté dans les terres de sites OB/OD, y compris Guam. De plus, présents sont les composés pyrotechniques de magnésium qui sont largement utilisés dans les flammes militaires et pour inciter le solide propellant de moteurs de roquettes et comporte autant de 45% de substances polyfluorales perpétuelles ou PFAS, appelées "chemicals pour toujours" dû à leur haute résistance à la déclencheur naturel. La brûlure ou déclenché de déchets énergétiques contenant PFAS facilitera leur libération et dispersion, exposant notre communauté à ces substances qui causent le cancer, la blessure du foie, la diminution de la fertilité, risque d'asthme et maladie thyroïde. Les enfants et les personnes avec des conditions cardiaques et bronchiales préexistantes seront le plus à risque d'être exposés à la particule. Exposés à long et à court terme à des particules fines ou particules de 2,5 microns et plus petites peuvent causer la santé des gens, conduisant à des crises cardiaques, l'asthme et la mort premature. La brûlure et la déclenché ont résulté en une extensive contamination et des coûts de nettoyage stagnants qui peuvent atteindre plus de la moitié d'un milliard de dollars à chaque site. Au-delà des US, les sites de brûlure ou déclenché de déchets dangereux ont conduit à 54 déclarations superfonds séparées et ont exposé les gens qui ont vécu près d'eux à des dangers qui vont persister pendant des générations. Le président Biden a signé la loi "Pact Act" qui liste les maladies présumées auxquelles ceux inscrits et les veterans souffrant de maladies peuvent automatiquement recevoir de la santé due à l'exposition à la brûlure ou déclenché. À l'origine des années 1980, le Congrès américain a interdit la brûlure et la déclenché de déchets dangereux aux États-Unis, sauf pour un explosif de déchets qui ne peut pas être déshydraté par d'autres modes de traitement jusqu'à ce que une alternative plus sûre soit développée. Dans les quatre décennies depuis que l'EPA promulguait ces règles sous la section 40 CFR, 265.382, il y a eu de grands avancées dans les technologies qui peuvent remplacer l'OB/OD. Un étude de 2018 par l'Académie nationale de sciences, d'ingénierie et de médecine a déclaré qu'il n'y a pas de significant sécurité technique ou barrières régulières pour la déploiement complet des technologies alternatives pour la démilitarisation de la grande majorité des munitions de déchets conventionnels, énergétique en bulk et associés. Selon ce rapport, toutes les technologies alternatives auraient des émissions plus basses et moins d'un impact environnemental et public, seraient monitorables et seraient probablement plus acceptables au public. L'EPA a publié un rapport similaire en 2019, évaluant les différentes technologies alternatives qui ont été utilisées avec succès dans le lieu de l'OB/OD au sein des US. Certaines des alternatives viables qui sont en fonction et dans d'autres jurisdictions : cryofacture, cutturage d'eau, cutturage mécanique, chambres de déclenché statique. Chaque de ces processus alternatifs a été démontré ou permis aux US, et en général a un niveau de maturité plus élevé que d'autres technologies. De plus, les éléments explosifs peuvent être déclenchés dans les chambres de déclenché ou de chambres entièrement à vacuum, résultant en moins d'impact environnemental et de la santé. Le projet a reçu un soutien majoritaire énorme de la communauté, conduisant à un nombre d'amendements pour renforcer le projet, en adressant les préoccupations des constituants, notamment le projet amendé prend en compte les difficultés associées à la démilitarisation de l'ancienne ordonnance de la deuxième guerre mondiale, qui pose un risque de sécurité au public et à la livraison aux usines hors de l'île. Deuxièmement, le projet amendé, 360, adresse les options limitées de transport transmis de déchets dangereux aux usines aux US, et ce sont les recommandations faites par les adjoints de la région, ainsi que l'EPA de Guam. Le projet inclut maintenant une exception pour permettre l'OB de l'ordonnance de la deuxième guerre mondiale jusqu'à ce que une alternative plus sûre à la déclenché soit identifiée et disponible au Guam, et fixe les paramètres pour la reévaluation des alternatives sûres disponibles pour plus protéger la santé de notre peuple. De plus, le projet met en place la prohibition de la transmission de déchets dangereux par Guam, réalisant que dans de nombreux cas, il y a des options limitées de transport transmis aux usines permisées aux US. Donc, à ce moment-là, je voudrais proposer des amendements au projet, et celui est sur le drive, je crois. Si je peux juste obtenir un moment de récession.
On est en récession.
We're in recess. We're back from recess. Senator Perez?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. So the First Amendment makes a spelling correction. It's on page 5, line 2. It's in the drive as well. Basically, it's for item number 10. So basically prohibits the use of open detonation to treat hazardous waste, with the exception of World War II unexploded ordinances, until such time Guam is equipped with a safer alternative. So that's the amendment. It's just a spelling correction.
And I'd like to just clarify. The lines for the amendment is line 1 to 3, page 5. On the amendment, are there any objections? Hearing none, amendment passes. Senator Perez, you are recognized.
Okay, the other amendment is line 25, page 4. And it basically removes the eighth item, so import hazardous waste into Guam. And so the reason being is that, in looking at the definition of hazardous waste, it incorporates a whole list of items that need to be vetted more fully at this time. So I would like to suspend that in the bill.
On the amendment, Senator Tiedagu, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, it was brought to the attention, even by EPA, that any kind of imported hazardous waste is monitored by EPA. You know, they've been doing their due diligence. And then when I questioned, actually, EPA, when any kind of hazardous waste, when I consider that as like used oil coming from another island, a neighboring island, and brought into Guam for us to dispose of, it's not the case. Usually, these are in transit, and there was a concern regarding this. So, you know, I stand in full support because it does have some ramifications, not just on used oil, but other things. So I'm glad the author has decided to strike out this section of the bill. So thank you, Madam. I stand in support of this amendment.
Thank you. On the amendment, are there any objections? Hearing none, amendment passes. Senator Perez?
Those are amendments for now, and I ask for my colleague's support, since it was Massey.
Thank you. On Bill 360-36, as amended and further amended on the floor, Senator Tiedagu, followed by Senator Duñez.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I attended, along with the author of the legislation, this public hearing, which was a full house, basically. You know, and we spent quite a bit of time, almost two, over two hours on this public hearing. And, you know, those for and those against. But one of the concerns I had, of course, I listen to those who are against a measure and find out what's the reasoning behind it. And one of the questions that I had was the other, what we just spoke on, on the last amendment, you know, hazardous waste coming in. And there could be some ramifications, but of course, the author corrected that and struck it out. But one of my biggest concerns was the detonation of like World War II bombs that we find still up to this day behind our homes or in residence in areas that are surrounded by businesses, as well as just even in the jungle, for instance. And it's very dangerous to have to move something this old that it could go off. So many times, they have to detonate it right then and there. So the concern was addressed in the amended version to allow this detonation for these World War II bombs to have an emergency, it's called, through EPA, it's called an emergency permit in order to detonate them. So I'm really especially happy that that amendment was made in there. And that was a concern, too, from EPA as well. Madam Speaker, one of the comments that were made, too, came from... Let me pull this up. I believe her name was, yeah. Carolyn Hoekson, Director of the Resource Conservation and Recovery. And it was a memo that was sent out to all the regions, number 1 through 10, on the purpose of communicating existing regulations and detonations. And in this memo that was sent out, the letter, that I believe it might be in the committee report, it talks about what, that the requirement of these detonations and even burning says that as they go through this, they have to find and evaluate alternatives and new technologies to make this safer for the environment. I mean, this was coming directly from the director to the regions. And that's what I'm concerned about because, you know, what happens on the military base is, basically, we really don't have jurisdiction. I know they want to comply with Guam law. They try to work, you know, hand in hand. But, you know, we want to ensure that whatever they're doing on the military base, and it bleeds out into our community, is something safe. And knowing that the federal government is on top of this, at least this particular director, telling everyone in these regions that they need to evaluate and ensure that any kind of burning or any detonation is done with alternatives that are safe for the environment. So we do know that the federal government is on top of it. I mean, in some other jurisdictions in the mainland, they're still addressing this. Technology for this type of burning or even detonation is very expensive. But those jurisdictions have fought to get that new technology and to protect their environment, to protect their air. So I stand in support of this legislation, but this legislation doesn't stop here. We have to do more to ensure that the federal government is complying to what's in the best interest of our community and not just what's inside the gate, but outside as well. So thank you, Madam Speaker, for the opportunity.
Thank you, Senator Tiedagu, Senator Duñez.
It's just Massey, Madam Speaker, too, for allowing me to share a few thoughts on this bill, 360-36. I did have a chance to review a lot of the comments and viewed a lot of the testimony provided in the public hearing phase, and got a few phone calls and monitored the discussion. I, like the retiring speaker, did kind of observe the issues of jurisdiction, albeit, of course, we want to ensure at every level on our entire island, whether it be inside the fence or outside the fence, we do everything to mitigate the impacts of possible poisoning or detrimental things that can get in our water, be in our air, or have any hazardous implication for our health. I guess my concern is with EPA coming forward. I mean, they are the lead. And I would hope that with the amendments that have basically been proposed in the bill, essentially, it almost reads now like a resolution, which I think is proper at this point, simply because I think these type of things also have unintended consequences from time to time. And that is, you have an existence of hazardous waste. You have an existence of hazardous waste that's being collected. You have an existence of hazardous waste in the form of unexploded ordinance. And it's not just Guam. It's a regional approach. And so the problem has to be solved. But the problem has to be solved, I believe, through coordination, through more outreach, through more discussion. And this is where this legislature, and particularly going to the next legislature, we have to continue... continue to do things, I believe, by working with our lead agencies, to find out why. Why are we arriving at a bill for something that should be forward-thinking and negotiated and discussed at a level between a civilian military task force, knowing, knowing that we are going to continue to have to coexist, and knowing that there are issues because of past practices, and because of the scourge of war, and all the other things that require for us to secure and be safe, all of those things that come along with having to have a military and having to have this high level of safety requirements through strength, through, through power, bring about. So I would just hope that as we go forward, because certainly, the amendments to this legislation took into consideration that there are unintended consequences to passing laws that say, you cannot do this. Now, this bill basically seems to state that there is a need and a requirement to discuss and to avail of all modern technologies when we're dealing with hazardous waste and methods of disposal. I think that at this point, it has arrived at a reasonable discussion, because that's what I see after the amendments that have been put into this legislation. Essentially, this has the force and effect of a resolution, in my opinion. And it also takes into consideration, I believe, more of a prodding to our lead agencies, those in the executive, charged with executing and being in charge of the safety and security of all of the island of Guam, to be in front. Madam Chair, we even know that literally, as we speak, there's a lawsuit on this issue. And so it's not lost on the fact that those who are in charge have to account, account for the extension of permits. Why? Is that mitigating unintended consequences of the fact that you have the hazard? You know, there are areas in the northern Mariana, Madam Chair, that are literally still fenced off. Because to tread into those areas could be a perilous fate because of the amount of unexploded ordinance. That is a current hazard. What would you do if the law prohibited you from disposing of that in a way that you needed to? So this is a very complex issue, Madam Chair, and I'm, and I'm at least satisfied with the fact that those that came forward, that are involved in the disposal of hazardous waste, that are charged with executing the contracts for removal, and then most importantly, that our protection agency, the jurisdiction, when you have the duty and responsibility to sign off, you are the forward arm of our government. And these concerns need to be brought up and dealt with in a way where there is constant communication. And when we come to the point of outlawing something or proposing to outlaw something that on its face has jurisdictional issues, which I'm not saying is the wrong thing to do, but who has the lead in terms of that jurisdiction and approval? Our government. So I think with the further discussion on this bill and what this bill now calls for, with the suggestion that the approach to this coming to head on what is the best way, because unexploded ordinance, hazardous material, it's, if you passed the law that said you couldn't do anything with it, wouldn't make it evaporate. It would still exist, and you would still have a problem. So I think it's important for our community to understand and for the relationships that we need to continue to build, to have proper conversations on these issues, and for our lead agency to lean forward on these issues, is the way that a healthy community solves these very complex, difficult problems. It is not right, and I'm not saying this was the intention, but it is not right to try to place or cast blame on a situation that exists, because you have a problem you have to deal with. It is better to find solutions. And I hope now, with the amendments that basically make this bill a suggestion of sorts, calls for the collaboration, that it now leads to that, which would, should have been the intention from the beginning. I am clearly not ever opposed to being adversarial. I think I do a reasonable job of that. But I also believe that it is vital and so important for open lines of communications and understanding the issues, to communicate along with legislate. Sajidus Maasi, Madam Speaker, for the opportunity to express my feelings and thoughts on Bill 360-36.
Thank you, Senator Duñez. On the bill, Bill number 360-36 as amended and further amended on the floor. Senator Perez, you may close.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I do, I do, I'm very grateful for the comments that were made here today in support of, of Bill 360. And, you know, part of this bill, too, was to give more agency to our US EPA. They are under extreme pressure to, to make these calls and in, in light of, you know, also regulating the, the US military. And so I just also, this bill actually would prohibit open burning of hazardous waste, and, which I think is really critical, because, you know, as we're looking, you know, open burning of hazardous waste is one of the most harmful activities. And I just want to share with you one of the statements from one of those that were testifying. You know, Callan Perez, she, she provided testimony regarding her late, her father, the late Colonel Dr. Chris Perez, who served, served as a state surgeon for the Guam Army National Guard, was deployed for four months in 2009 to Iraq, and was heavily exposed to smoke from open burning that was described as the darkest, thickest, and most fowling. In 2013, her father, who was relatively healthy before he joined the army in 2006, was not a smoker, was diagnosed with non-small cell lung cancer, which eventually took his life. She said she supports the bill so that, quote, "No more of our people need to deal with the diseases caused by open burning, open detonation practices." Additionally, Nolan Flores stated, quote, "The continuance of OBOD in Guam further threatens the already vulnerable health situation of our people. With Guam's cancer diagnosis and mortality rates rising while those of the United States are falling," as reported by Dr. Ned David, "not banning OBOD would only harm the well-being of our people." And just to reiterate, with the passage of, of the PACT Act, there was a series of cancers that were associated with open burning. So cancers such as brain cancer, gastrointestinal cancer of any type, glioblastoma, head cancer of any type, kidney cancer, lymphatic cancer of any type, lymphoma, melanoma, neck cancer, pancreatic cancer, reproductive cancer, respiratory cancer of any type, asthma, chronic bronchitis, chronic obstructive pulmonary disease, chronic rhinitis, chronic sinusitis, emphysema, granulomatous disease, interstitial lung disease, pleuritis, pulmonary fibrosis, sarcoid, sarcoidosis. So it's, it's clear that as US EPA is looking to change its rules, that it's important that we limit these harmful practice, harmful and outdated practices that exist within the United States, including Guam. And since 2001, 573,000 disability claims have been filed with US military veterans for respiratory illnesses linked to toxic exposure from open burning pits in combat zones. So Bill 360 is an important bill, because we must be, we must be proactive in the protection of our island and our people, in preventing exposure to these toxic chemicals from these outdated practices. And yes, it's important that we continue to hold our agencies accountable, to ensure that they're taking the, the best path in doing that, to protect our island and our environment. And I want to thank my colleagues for their, their comments, and I ask for their support in advance. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Perez. A motion, please.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I move to place Bill 360 as amended into the third reading file.
On the motion to place Bill 360-36 COR as amended into the third reading voting file, are there any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. We are now on Bill number 354-36 COR. An act to add a new Section 80129 to Chapter 80 Title V, Guam Code annotated relative to the acquisition of library books, ebooks, audiobooks, digital publications, newsletters, software, and any other publications deemed necessary by the Guam Public Library System, introduced by Senator Tina Rose Munya Barnes. Senator Perez, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I move to place Bill 354-36 COR, as introduced by the Vice Speaker, Tina Rose Munya Barnes, into the third reading file on behalf of the Vice Speaker. And I wish to move it to the third reading file, and I wish to discuss.
Please proceed.
Bill 354-36 updates the Enabling Act of the Guam Public Library System to enable them to procure library books, ebooks, audiobooks, digital publications, newsletters, software, and any other publication deemed necessary. Bill 354-36 was created in close collaboration with the Guam Public Library System under the leadership of Director Serengen, with the support of his staff, who are working diligently to invigorate the public library system and bring it into the 21st century in order to meet the diverse needs of our community. Our library system plays an important role in supporting education and literacy by providing free access to much-needed resources that most of our community are not privileged to have. Our public libraries promote intellectual freedom, encourage lifelong learning, and maintain, maintain cultural materials. Community involvement in the public library system is growing, and staff members are making the effort to reach out to our public schools, and they're collaborating with the Guam Department of Education, librarians, Guam Public Health, AmeriCorps, Guam Cedars, and the OG Press at the University of Guam to find ways to accommodate the needs of our community in advancing literacy in our island. I am confident in their passion and vision for bringing our libraries in the 21st century and closing the digital divide for lower-income community members, and our students especially. The public library has also been granted numerous grants to help achieve this, and it's important that we update the laws to meet the efforts of our library staff and the community to advance many of these important initiatives, such as literacy. And I ask for my colleagues' support. Sajidus Maasi.
Thank you, Senator Perez. On Bill number 354-36 COR, on the bill, Senator Torres, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I rise in support of this bill. And I, I think what was brought up at the public hearing that was so interesting is, is the comment made by the new director, and that is that Guam has done so much to invest in a library system and to place it very strategically where there, it has access to the community, and to also upgrade the facility so that they are, are attractive and comfortable. But the one missing component was the inventory. When they get there and they find outdated material or insufficient material that is relative or, or in digital form, that they lose interest. And so the, the only way to, to truly invigorate the system and to make it workable and, and relative to the community's needs and interests is to amend such things, amend the acquisition of materials to allow for the library to determine what its true needs are, what exactly it is, the, the inventory that they need to acquire, and then have GSA proceed with it. Very interesting way that our procurement has worked and, and worked to their disadvantage. So this simple fix by our, our Vice Speaker in introducing this bill will hopefully bring the, the library system to a new, modern standard and, and make it a truly attractive and useful and enjoyable place for our community. So I urge all my colleagues to get on board, because this is a very practical fix, and it's, it's relevant to the needs of the library. Sajidus Maasi.
Sajidus Maasi, Senator Torres. On the bill, Bill number 354-36. Senator Perez, you may close.
I just asked for my colleagues' support, and I think it's really exciting. If you ever talked to Director Serengen, you could see there's a lot of passion behind modernizing the library system, and just the vision of increasing, you know, their role in increasing literacy on Guam, as well as being centers, community centers, where people can, you know, share ideas and, and become innovators for our island, which is so important. We cannot underestimate the value that our library system has in inspiring the, the next generation of entrepreneurs of sustainability, for sustainability for our island. So I thank my colleagues and ask my colleagues in advance for their support.
Thank you. A motion, please.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I move to place Bill 354-36 as introduced into the third reading file.
On the motion, are there any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. We are now on Bill number 359-36 COR. Senator San Agustin, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Notwithstanding the House rules, I move to go back to motion to add one bill, and my colleagues will support it. It's in reference to the affordable housing.
Thank you. Are there any objections? Please read the title, Senator San Agustin.
Okay. I'll read the title. The title-
Bill number and title.
Okay. The, the bill number is 348-36, as amended by the Committee on General Government Operation, Appropriation, and Housing, an act to add a new Section 58128.7 to Article 1 of Chapter 58, Title 12, Guam Code annotated relative to mitigating the housing affordability crisis by authorizing tax incentive for eligible business entities that construct a minimum number of affordable housing units to creating the Affordable Housing Assistance Fund and to requiring the deposit of affordable housing business previous tax payments into the Affordable Housing Assistance Fund. Madam Speaker.
On the motion to go back to motions, any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. We are now in motion. Senator San Agustin, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I move to place Bill number 348-36 as amended by the Committee on General Government Operation, Appropriation, and Housing onto the session agenda. Bill number is 348-36 LS, an act to add a new Section 58128.7 to Article 1 of Chapter 58, Title 12, Guam Code amended relative to mitigating the housing affordability crisis by authorizing tax incentive for eligible business entities that construct a minimum number of affordable housing units to creating the Affordable Housing Assistance Fund and to, and to requiring the deposit of affordable housing business previous tax payment into the Affordable Housing Assistance Fund. And this bill was introduced by Senator Telo Titeguy and co-sponsored by Senator Frank Blas, Senator Clinton Regel, Senator Anthony Ada, Senator Sabina Perez, Senator Joanne Brown.
On the motion to add, are there- On the motion to add, are there any objections?
Point of inquiry, Madam Speaker.
Please state your point of inquiry.
Was this bill put on the potential items list? Okay.
Yes, it was. On the motion to add, are there any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. We are still in motions. Senator Perez, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I move to place the nomination of Attorney John C. Terlahi to serve as Judge Superior Court of Guam. It's from the Committee on Health, Land, Justice, and Culture.
On the motion to add the nomination of John Terlahi, are there any objections? There's been an objection. All those in favor of adding the nomination of John Terlahi to the session agenda? Yes. State your objection. Senator Torres, you are recognized.
Madam Speaker, my concern with the nomination going to the floor is that the body has not had the opportunity to review any committee reports or the investigative report, which was not provided to the body in general. And I think that the selection of a judge to our Supreme Court warrants that we have the full information and disclosure to all members of the body prior to our vote on it. And I don't, I don't, it was explained to us that only committee members are privy to this, but I think that privacy and confidential reviews are warranted so that all of the members of the legislature have the information necessary to make an informed and confident vote on the nomination of a Supreme Court judge nominee. I do not have any inclination to not support the candidate, but I think in full disclosure and transparency that that should be an important component of our vote. And that is why I respectfully object to the placement of the nomination on the floor.
Thank you very much. There's been an objection. Senator Perez.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. So I can withdraw the placement of the nomination at this time until such time the senators have an opportunity to review the documents and they've been invited to do so. So I'll just rescind this motion at this time.
Thank you. There's been a motion to withdraw the nomination. Are there any objections? There's been an objection to the withdrawal. All those in favor of withdrawing the nomination at this time, please signify by raising your hand. Okay, that motion has, that objection has been withdrawn. Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. We are still in motions. Senator Sinagustin.
Madam Speaker, we have other appointments that were made, and that's for Gina Ramos and Doyon Morato to the GCC, Gina Ramos to the GCC Board, and Doyon Morato to the Airport Board.
On the motion to add Gina Ramos, nominee for the GCC Board of Trustees, are there any objections? To the session agenda? Hearing none, motion carries. On the motion to add Doyon Morato nomination for the Guam International Airport Authority Board of Trustees to the session agenda, are there any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. Thank you, Senator Sinagustin.
Legislative concurrence.
Yes, and now we will move to legislative concurrents. Senator Sinagustin, you are recognized.
Madam Speaker, I ask that Gina Ramos to the GCC Board be placed on the voting file and to do confirm.
Thank you very much. On the motion to add the nomination of Gina Ramos for the GCC Board of Trustees to the voting file with the recommendation to do confirm, are there any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. Senator Sinagustin.
Madam Speaker, for Doyon Morato to the Airport Board with the motion to put in the voting file and to do confirm.
On the motion to add the nomination of Doyon Morato for the Guam International Airport Authority Board of Trustees with the recommendation to do confirm to the voting file, are there any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. We are back to second reading now on Bill number 359-36COR. Senator Sinagustin, you are recognized.
Madam Speaker, I ask that 357 and 359 be moved towards the end because we require a committee of the whole and that we proceed with Bill 348-36.
On the motion to place Bill number 359 and Bill 357 to the bottom of the agenda for the Committee of the Whole, are there any objections? And to proceed with Bill number 464. Oh, sorry, excuse me, 348. What is that? On the motion to set Bill number 359-36 and Bill number 357-36 to the bottom of the agenda and to proceed now with Bill number 348-36, are there any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. We will take a moment's recess, colleagues. We are back from recess and we are now on Bill number 348-36LS. Senator Taidegui, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I wish to place Bill 348-36LS as amended and act to add a new 58128.7 to Article 1 of Chapter 58, Title 12, Guam Code annotated relative to mitigating the housing affordability crisis by authorizing tax incentives for eligible business entities that construct a minimum number of affordable housing units and to create the Affordable Housing Assistance Fund and to requiring the deposit of affordable housing business privileged tax payments into the Affordable Housing Assistance Fund, which is introduced by myself, Senator Frank Blas Jr., Clint Rogel, Tony Ada, Sabina Perez, and Joanne Brown. And I'd like to place it on the thirty reading file and then discuss it, please.
Please proceed.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, and Sidhu Smasi. And thank you for the opportunity to hear Bill 348 as amended by the Committee on General Operations and Appropriation and Housing. And I'd like to wish to thank the Legal Bureau and the Finance Committee for working with my office and the Guam Economic Authority on technical edits and other amendments based on decisions that took place during the November 30th, 2022, public hearing on Bill 348. Madam Speaker, Bill 348 as amended recognizes that this legislature has an opportunity to use a responsible policy proposal to help increase affordable housing inventory on Guam, particularly at a time when more families are finding it difficult, if not impossible, to build and purchase a home. The adverse effects of COVID pandemic specifically simply chain challenges, specifically supply challenges, rising interest rates, and inflationary impacts have made purchasing a home on Guam much more challenging in the face of higher food, fuel, healthcare, and emergency costs. Sorry, excuse me. As shared in my opening remarks during the public hearing on Bill 348, a local media article published just past October reported that Guam's median price for a single-family dwelling reached $428,000, $26,000, a substantial increase from the median price of $299,000 in the pre-pandemic 2019, and $335,500 in 2020. The 2022 figure represents a 12% increase from $380,000 in 2021. If approved, Bill 348 as amended prioritizes homeownership for working families across our island who are hoping to buy a home in this tough housing market but find it nearly impossible to do so as homes prices are quickly outpacing their incomes. Despite having set aside a few or several thousand dollars over many months, if not years, to apply as a down payment on a home, tying their savings to a total home construction or purchase amount of $250,000 to $350,000, these prices, which are already high to begin with, are nowhere to be found these days. According to the same media article cited in my early statement, as of just a few months ago, there were only about 240 homes in the market lower than the 400 to 500 that Guam used to see at any given time. About 78 of the listed homes are pending or in a process of being sold, and many are in the $220,000 to $375,000 range, which leaves only about 164 single-family homes to choose from, including single-family dwellings that cost $1 million to $2 million. Madam Speaker, with Bill 348 as amended, the legislature has an opportunity to build on existing Guam law which grants developers that build at least 25 affordable housing units government incentives, including BPT, income, real property, and used tax benefits. Madam Speaker, Bill 348 as amended proposes to extend these tax benefits to eligible developers in exchange for constructing no less than five affordable housing units, but fewer than 25 units recognizing the current Affordable QC law. The difference between the current law and what Bill 348 as amended proposes is that this measure recognizes that there may be smaller companies out there that may be interested in adding a few more affordable housing units to our local inventory, which is the intent behind Bill 348. That is, to mitigate the housing affordability crisis by increasing our affordable housing supply. Madam Speaker, Bill 348 as amended requires for the developers engaging in the construction of not less than five but fewer than 25 affordable housing units, the BPT payments that are generated from the purchase or construction of an affordable housing unit shall be deposited into an Affordable Housing Assistance Fund. Instead of providing of a developer a 100% BPT abatement as the current Affordable QC law provides for the development of at least 25 units, Bill 348 proposes to use BPT payments as described in the bill as a viable funding source to help a qualified borrower close their home loan by requiring funds to be applied to their down payment slash closing cost requirements. Each payment shall be made to a financial institute through escrow and only after the borrower has met all eligibility requirements established by GIDA. Madam Speaker, I thank GIDA and their bond counsel, the Guam Housing Corporation, and industry voices, including that of Mr. Carlos Camacho, for offering their expertise and recommendations during the review process of Bill 348 as amended. As the measure before us reflects language proposed by GIDA and their bar and counsel ensuring that BPT payments do not adversely impact BPT bonds. Madam Speaker, Bill 348 as amended includes additional amendments gathered during the bill's public hearing and post-hearing discussions, which require that the affordable income threshold shall be based on the limits established by USDA, which are published annually. Designate the Guam Housing Corporation instead of GIDA as the administrating agency to include management of the Affordable Housing Assistance Fund and prohibit borrowers from receiving benefits from more than one government of Guam Affordable Housing Assistance Program. Madam Speaker, Bill 348 as amended requires the Guam Housing Corporation in consultation with GIDA to develop an application process and the appropriate rules and guidelines necessary to facilitate the BPT deposits and financial assistance for down payment and other closing costs for qualified first-time home borrowers. In closing, Madam Speaker, Bill 348 as amended recognizes the good that comes out of legislative policies that invest in our families and our community. As Bill 348's findings and intent section summarizes, between 2012 and 2022, 6.3 million in first-time homeowners assistance program grants issued by the Guam Housing Corporation to 700 to 784 families yielded approximately $153 million in additional economic activity through services associated with real estate, banking, escrow, appraisals, and title insurance business transactions. Madam Speaker, the housing affordability crisis facing our island is real, and it requires this legislature to take swift and responsible action in the form of Bill 348 as amended in order to help bring our families one step closer to owning a home. Bill 348 as amended invests in our families, and it will help lead to new communities, creating an economic multiplier through new and expanded grocery and retail stores, telecommunications services, restaurants, and so much more. Madam Speaker, I thank you for the opportunity to present 348 as amended, and I wish to use this moment to recognize and thank my colleagues, Senator Frank Blas Jr., Senator Clint Rogel, Senator Tony Ada, Senator Sabrina Paris, Senator Joanne Brown, and I would be making an amendment to include Senator Joe Sinagastin into, as one of the cosponsors in an amendment at the end, and for them to join me in prioritizing this critical affordable housing policy proposals, proposal for the people of Guam. Sidus masi.
Thank you, Senator Taidegui. On Bill number 348-36 as amended, on the bill... Senator Sinagastin, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. My colleagues and to the people of Guam, initially when this bill was first written, I had reservations, concerns with the Guam Housing's involvement. From the public hearing and through the amendments led by the author of the bill, I have to commend her for the bill, great bill. It's about taking care of the people of Guam and the affordable housing, and for including me to be co-sponsor. And with that, I am fully supportive of this bill. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I apologize. Back to Senator Taidegui's motion to add co-sponsor. Are there any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. On the bill, Bill 348-36 as amended. Senator Taidegui, you may close.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, and I greatly appreciate all the hard work, not just by this body, but as well as those who participated in the public hearing and provided the input. I think this is a great opportunity and way to lower our cost of housing, and that's by increasing our inventory. That's how you lower the cost, and hopefully this bill will be acted upon it as soon as possible, and I greatly appreciate the support of my colleagues on this legislation. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senator Taidegui. A motion, please, to place in the voting file.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I make a motion to place Bill 348-36 to the voting file.
On the motion to place Bill number 348-36 as amended in the voting file, are there any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. We are still in the second reading file. We are now on Resolution Number 464-36 LS. Senator Rogel, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I move to place Resolution 464-36 LS into the third reading file and discuss.
Please proceed, Senator.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. This resolution is pretty straightforward. This resolution is really only asking or calling upon the U.S. federal government to ensure that our drinking water is clean and safe. Specifically, it calls on the Secretary of the Interior, Deb Haaland, to honor the Department of the Interior's responsibilities to Guam and its residents by directing the offices of Insular Affairs and Environmental Policy and Compliance to review and assess the potential environmental impacts of the U.S. Marine Corps Base Camp Blah's live-fire training range complex at Northwest Field and the hand grenade range at Anderson South on the Northern Guam Lands Aquifer, and to provide guidance to the Department of Navy prior to range operations that ensures the protection of Guam's water resources. About 8,600 U.S. Marines from Okinawa will be moving to Guam, and as part of that action, they'll be constructing, in fact, they're in the middle of constructing or working on constructing, a live-fire training range complex in Guam. This training range complex sits on top of the Northern Guam Lands Aquifer. For those at home who don't know what that is, it's basically a giant sponge up north collects all of the water, and it's where we get most of our drinking water from. The aquifer is made up of the porous limestone rock up north. Rainwater seeps in through that rock, stores the water in what's called an aquifer, and that's where we drill wells to extract that water and pump the water to all of our homes. In fact, it's estimated that it provides about 85% of the island's fresh drinking water. This proposed live-fire training range complex, or actually, this live-fire training range complex that is under construction, consists of five separate firing ranges, including a known-distance rifle range, a pistol range, a modified record-of-fire range, non-standard small arms range, multi-purpose machine gun range, and a standalone hand grenade range located Anderson South. About 187 acres of pristine limestone forests have already been cleared in support of the live-fire training range complex. Construction was anticipated of the KD Rifle Range project was anticipated to be completed in this year, 2022, and operational sometime between 2023 and 2024. The multi-purpose machine gun range is ongoing. Its expected completion is in 2024. Now, according to the SEIS, the SEIS is an abbreviation for the Supplemental Environmental Impact Study. A study that was conducted by the Department of Defense pursuant to the National Environmental Policy Act, also known as NEPA. That study that was conducted by the Department of Defense themselves, they found that up to 6.7 million lead bullets would be fired and over 421 hand grenades thrown over the aquifer each year, potentially threatening the community's primary water source as well as surrounding ocean areas. The SEIS also found that these range operations have the potential to leach munitions constituents into groundwater, constituents like lead, antimony, copper, and zinc. Munitions constituents are any materials originated from unexploded ordnance, discarded military munitions, and other military munitions, including explosive and non-explosive materials in emission, degradation, or breakdown elements of such ordnance or munitions. The SEIS also found that this includes explosives used at the hand grenade range would include trinitroturane, cyclo-tetramethylene, tetranitramine, hexahydrotrinitrotritrazine. See how long these names are? These are different chemicals, many of which have been found to be hazardous, many of which have been found to be cancerous. In addition, the SEIS has found themselves that the firing ranges would potentially increase the amount of petroleum, oil, lubricants, hazardous waste, herbicides, pesticides, and fertilizers being stored, transported, and utilized on these proposed facilities. So I believe that this is concerning, that the SEIS, while it does note these possibilities, it lacks a thorough discussion of range munitions constituents and omits available data regarding the potential for these chemical agents to remain in soils and leach into groundwater. In January of 2012, the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency published the EPA Federal Facilities Forum issue paper, Site Characterization for Munitions Constituents paper, which compiles studies of military installations in the U.S. and Canada, and identifies a wide range of chemical agents left on the surface soils surrounding firing ranges. This EPA 2012 paper also cites data showing that chemical components of explosives and propellants tend to be mobilized by heavy rainfall and may threaten groundwater supplies. That's not good news for Guam, where we have heavy rainfall. This resolution recognizes our obligation to protect and preserve the natural and cultural heritage of the Chamorro people that this land and its resources are an inheritance from. It's not only about preserving the past, it's also about protecting the present and future generations. Right now, this resolution finds that there is insufficient scientific data available to Guam residents to fully assess potential irreversible impacts of the construction and operation of the firing ranges on the Northern Guam Lands Aquifer, and it's critical that the community is given reasonable time to review relevant and sound information before the ranges become operational. Essentially, all this resolution is doing is calling upon the federal government to take a closer look at the actions over the Northern Guam Lands Aquifer as a result of the military buildup and as a result of the construction and operation of the firing range complex, and ensure that our drinking water is safe. I don't think that's asking for too much. I don't think it's asking for too much to ask that they ensure that our drinking water is safe. Now, there is another resolved clause here that I've been told by some colleagues that probably is of greater concern than the other resolved clause. There's two resolved clauses here. The first one, on behalf of the people, calls on the Secretary of the Interior, Deb Haaland, to honor the Department of Interior's responsibilities to Guam and its residents by just simply directing that the Office of Insular Affairs and Environmental Policy and Compliance review and assess the potential environmental impacts of this training range complex, and then provide guidance to the Department of the Navy prior to range operations that ensures the protection of Guam's water resources. That's the first resolved clause. I think that's pretty straightforward, and I don't think that's asking for too much. However, I do understand that the second resolved clause may raise the hackles of some of my colleagues and may be more controversial in some of my colleagues' minds. And that second resolved clause calls on the U.S. Senate Committee on Armed Services and the U.S. House of Representatives Committee on Armed Services to pause construction activities related to the U.S. Marine Corps Base Camp Blah's live-fire training range complex at the Northwest Field Anderson Base and the hand grenade range at Anderson South, and withhold all current and future funding of the ranges or any associated federal action until environmental impacts concerning the impending threat of contamination of the Northern Guam Lands Aquifer and future threat of diminished freshwater resources in Guam are reassessed. So the second resolved clause actually calls on the U.S. Senate Committee on Armed Services and the U.S. House of Representatives Committee on Armed Services to pause construction and withhold funding, but it's only asking them to do this until these threats can be properly assessed, until the threats of the Northern Guam Lands Aquifer can be properly assessed, and until we can ensure that our water resources are protected. And in addition to that, it's really just the resolution that's calling on them to do it. There's nothing here that mandates to do, mandates them to do. Of course, we don't have that power. We don't have the power to tell Uncle Sam to stop construction. We do not have the power to tell the military to stop building a base or a live-fire training range complex. We don't have, really, we don't even have the power to force them to follow their own EPA guidelines unless we bring them to court, but we don't have the power here in this legislative hall to mandate that they do these things. The most we can do is ask them through a resolution. So with that, Madam Speaker, I am asking my colleagues for their support on this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Senator Rogel, on the resolution, Resolution 464-36 LS. On the resolution... Senator Paris, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I rise in support of Resolution 464. You know, water is essential to life, and we take it for granted so often, and on Guam, we are blessed with an abundance of water resource here. It is ours to protect, it is ours to lose, and what Resolution 464 does, it's a legislative resolution that speaks to, is a call to the Chamorro people and everyone who calls Guam home to protect our most precious resource, the aquifer which we rely upon for our nourishment, our health, and our livelihood. Water is our most basic need. Clean, accessible drinking water is a human right, yet for many communities around the world, clean water is scarce or inaccessible. Here at home, we are blessed with abundance of clean water because of our Northern Guam Lands Aquifer, but our aquifer, again, the primary source of water of about 90% of Guam's residents, is especially fragile and delicately maintained by the protection of our limestone and ravine forests and other habitats. Yet, time and again, we are forced to compromise the health and sustainability of our primary water source, our native forests, our people for the Department of Defense, and the construction of the new Marine Corps base, the live-fire training range complex, or even the open-burn, open detonation of munitions in proximity to our most populous villages. I want to point out one of the testimony provided by those that came to the hearing. It was by Joni Kerr, and she pointed out, so she also, she trains students on hazardous waste operations. So her testimony, some of it states, "Since the end of World War II, our island's soil and water resources have been contaminated by solvents, heavy metals, munitions, careless disposal of military waste associated with running the Navy and Air Force bases. Anderson Air Force Base has superfund sites in various states of cleanup. Water wells are monitored on base and in Marbo area to keep track of toxic solvent plumes. The groundwater in Marbo is contaminated with trichloroethylene, a degreasing solvent. The Air Force and US EPA agreed to a waiver of technical impracticability because cleaning the aquifer directly over the saltwater interface could cause an upwelling of saltwater into the drinking water portion of the aquifer. Hence, there is no practical way to implement remedy. Further, hundreds of acres of pristine limestone forests cleared for the live-fire training range are lost forever. This is especially heartbreaking for the original landowners and their families. They remember how beautiful their land once was and how they lived and thrived on it. The only legacy to pass to their children are memories. Barren and useless, the land's only purpose now is to practice war. With the operation of this firing range, the amount of lead fired from 6 million bullets a year, the hundreds of thousands of gallons of solvents used to clean tens of thousands of weapons, the heavy metals and other chemicals associated with exploding thousands of hand grenades, is going to be huge, and frankly, it escapes me how the military intends to keep ahead of the contamination. Is there no plan in place? If these activities were proposed for areas like Martha's Vineyard or Greenwich, Connecticut, there would be an uproar. Well, we've been roaring for years with no effect." Well, we've been roaring for years with no effect." And so this is part of the testimony, which I encourage the public to look at and read closely. All the testimonies, in fact, we've received over 400 and growing number of responses in support of Resolution 464. Many of them are youth who have concerns for their future and the future of our island. And it is very clear that there hasn't been any baseline studies done. And this military buildup is moving so fast that we're seeing things erased before our very eyes against our will. And really, this is a resolution that is a call for solidarity between the people of Guam, who for decades have called for an end to the environmental injustice, a call for human rights and the rights of the Chamorro people to free prior and informed consent and our allies in Washington, D.C., to put a pause on the environmental damage taking place along our northern plateau. And I'm very humbled and honored to join all in support of this resolution. And I ask my colleagues for their support. Do as I say.
Thank you, Senator Perez. On Resolution Number 464-36. Senator Rigel, you may close.
Can I call for a moment's recess?
We are in recess. Senator Rogel, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. At this time, I move to amend the resolution to strike out the second resolved clause. This is lines 23 through 5, pages 4 and 5. This will strike out the clause that calls on the US Senate Committee on Armed Services and the US House of Representatives Committee on Armed Services to pause construction activities related to the US Marine Corps Base Camp laws, live-fire training range complex in Northwest Field Anderson Air Force Base, and the hand grenade range at Anderson South, and to withhold all current and future funding of the ranges or any associated federal action until environmental impacts concerning the impending threat of contamination of the Northern Guam Lenz Aquifer and future threat of diminished freshwater resources in Guam are reassessed. So this amendment is to strike this part out. The reason is I'm doing this in the spirit of compromise and in the spirit of Christmas. I realize that this is the most controversial part of this resolution, and ultimately, my hope is that this resolution will pass. I don't want to just introduce this resolution and then it's just me and perhaps Senator Perez voting yes on it. We want at least some of the resolution to pass, and particularly, the part of the resolution that I think is most important is at least the part where we're calling on the Secretary of the Interior to just essentially do her job and ensure that our drinking water is safe. We're just calling on her to please take a look at this again, make sure they're following every possible mitigation effort to protect our water resources. So that's the resolved clause that I think is the most important. So in light of that, I'm moving to strike the second resolved clause out. That way, it takes away any talk of pause, because I know when anytime someone says pause on the buildup or defund the buildup, people don't like those things. It gets viewed as being somehow anti-military. So just to ensure that the focus of the resolution is just on calling on the Secretary of the Interior to ensure that our drinking water is safe, I think that's the most important thing. So that's why I'm moving to strike out this other part of the resolution, this second resolved clause. And we'll focus instead on the first resolved clause. It's calling on the Secretary of the Interior to ensure that our drinking water in the Northern Lenz Aquifer is safe for everyone, for future generations as well. With that, I ask my colleagues for the support on this amendment.
Thank you, Senator Rogel. On the amendment. Are there any objections? Hearing none, amendment passes. Senator Rogel, you are still recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I also have a second motion I'd like to make to allow legal counsel to make technical corrections to the resolution, particularly in the title of the resolution, to ensure that the title now reflects the changes that were made to the body of the resolution.
Thank you. On the motion to allow legal to make technical amendments to the resolution, are there any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. Senator Rogel, you are still recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I also move to add Senator Sabina Perez as a cosponsor of this resolution.
On the motion to add Senator Perez as a cosponsor to Resolution Number 464-36. Are there any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. Senator Rogel.
One more motion. I apologize. I also add, move to add Senator Telotidegui as a cosponsor to this resolution.
On the motion to add Senator Tidigui to the resolution, are there any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. Senator Rogel.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. And so, again, just to reiterate, the focus of this resolution is really just to send a statement to the Department of the Interior and the federal government as a whole, that we want to ensure that if you're going to build a live-fire training range complex and you're going to operate this live-fire training range complex over our Northern Aquifer, just make sure that our drinking water is safe. We just want to send that strong message to the federal government that they must ensure that our drinking water is safe. I know some people may think, well, you know, they already do that. Well, I pose the question, do they? Take a look at Red Hill. Red Hill is a site in Hawaii that's recently become the site of much controversy. The reason is because Red Hill was found to have some contamination of its water resources there. When the public, some people became aware of this, you know, protesters came out. At first, the federal government, the DoD in particular, sort of didn't own up to it right away. They didn't admit to it at first. People were saying, no, there's evidence of this contamination, please look at it. Finally, under intense public pressure, DoD did have to admit that there was some contamination there. And now, they're taking a look at how to clean it up. The problem is residents in that area are concerned that it may be beyond the ability of cleanup. So we don't want this to happen to Guam's Northern Guam Lenz Aquifer. Again, it's 85% of our drinking water. We're a small island. Drinking water is everything. We don't have another state next door where we can borrow their drinking water like they do in the, in the states. We really have nowhere else to go. We can't divert water from a river in a neighboring state or country. The most we can do is try to come up with a desalinization plant, and that's extremely expensive. And why should we even go that route when we already have a really clean source of fresh drinking water? Mind you, I take that back. It's not a really clean source of fresh drinking water. There's already been instances of contamination on Guam in our water resources, and that's been documented. Particularly in the Northern Guam Lenz Aquifer, we've had fuel spills, jet fuel spills. We've also had other contamination that's been found in some of the wells up north. That's why, most of the public doesn't realize it, not every well on Guam is open. We've had to shut wells down because of the contamination found in those wells. So it's not too far-fetched to believe that our water resources are in jeopardy. A simple little accident can ruin the water for generations to come. So all we're doing is calling upon the Secretary of the Interior to please, please ensure that our drinking water is safe today, tomorrow, and forever. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senator Rogel. Motion, please.
Thank you. And I also move to place this resolution into the third reading file. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Hearing no objections. Are there any objections to move Resolution Number 464-36 as amended into the third reading voting file? Hearing none, motion carries. We will take a recess now until 2:00 PM, where we will continue with Bill Number 332-36LS. We are in recess. Thank you, colleagues.